Meeting called to order. The time is 6:02 PM. Public portion of the meeting begins. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Business Administrator Board Secretary has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, communicated to the Herald News, the Record, and filed with the clerk of the borough Hawthorne. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Clavieho? Ms. Arantrop? Dr. Morell? Mr. Clouse?
Here.
Mr. Raisher?
Here.
Mr. Shortway?
Here.
Mr. Tataro? Mrs. Scott?
Here. Please join me for the flag flagging. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Meeting Regulations. During each regular meeting, two opportunities are provided for citizens to ask questions and to make comments. During the first opportunity early on the agenda, the meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing items listed for approval on this agenda only. The second opportunity occurs just prior to adjournment when citizens may address any subject matter that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of this whole district. Persons wishing to speak must upon being recognized, rise, state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments and questions shall be addressed to the board president or presiding officer and shall be limited to five minutes per person. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for such comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments, since they can be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with district policy, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue. Publicly heard agenda items only. Seeing as we have no commentary, approval of minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Shortway. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Clouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisher?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes. We will now begin our work session. We are joined by the lovely Kathy Halawa, and I'm so sorry, I forgot your friend.
Patty Reese.
Patty Reese from NJSCA. We have a presentation on both Ethics and Robert's Rules, and we're very excited to have you. I apologize for the absence of our other members, but they are watching us live stream.
Okay, that's terrific. Shall I use the microphone, or what's the best way to talk to me? So...
What do you think, Sabrina?
What do you prefer? If you have, you will describe for us.
Oh, good. All right, so that's terrific. Thank you so much for having us. Some new faces. It's been a little while since I've been to Hawthorne, but I fondly serve you. It's really been a pleasure to be your field service rep. We facilitated your strategic plan a few years ago, which we're going to talk about before I leave, so it's really nice to be back. I brought with me Patricia Reese. She is going to be serving me in my territory, so it's a great opportunity for her to get to know you and vice versa. She's been a board member in her home district in Branchburg, town council, zoning board, am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all sorts of things. So we've got some really good people working for us at NJSCA, and Patty's one of the best, so I'm really pleased that she's riding along with me. And for all of that, Ethics is not my most exciting program, but it is really important. So thank you, Abby, for making the time for the board to learn this stuff. As board members, as soon as you take the oath of office, you are beholden to the School Ethics Law. You have to know what it says, you have to know what it means, and for a word like ethics that should be very black and white, there's a lot of nuance to it. There's a lot of gray things, there's a lot of questions. A lot of times, you'll need an attorney to help you navigate through that, but this is a great foundation to build your knowledge upon. So thank you again. And what I would like to say to the board is that boardsmanship is a team sport. So as you navigate through your board service, as a novice, as a veteran, you lean on each other. You have a whole team that's looking to support you. I'm one of the members of your team. I'm not an attorney, but I am very well versed in the School Ethics Act, just by the very nature of the work that I do. So you can run your questions here if they, if I cannot answer them, we have a team of attorneys at NJSCA Legal who can give you information, so that's a great resource. It's also free. All of these things are confidential, by the way. We don't tick marks of who calls us about what. And also, if you're advancing, really, one of your best sources of info is your board attorney. Your board knows your district, he's the one that's giving you guidance, will give you information, but he'll give you advice, or she will give you advice. You follow your bylaws to get the input of your board attorney. Aside from that, your superintendent, your board president, your business administrator, everyone can help you, right? So just keep that in mind as we go through this. I'm available to you now, later. I am your field service rep. Patty is also here to help you. And what's going to happen after I leave you tonight is I will send you an electronic packet of resources. Typically, you all get folders. I don't know if anybody actually reads them or puts them in the back of their car and never picks them up, but we all have it emailed to you with the School Ethics Act, with a copy of this presentation and a couple of other resources to add my contact information. So if anything comes up, by all means, let me know. And thank you for setting up this slideshow. Let's see, ooh, my clicker's working already. Beautiful. So what I mentioned before is that this is a law, right? That you are beholden to, so it's essential that you understand what it says, but I also think it's essential that you understand what it's about. And it's about holding the trust and confidence of the people who put you here, the people who voted you into office, the people that you represent, if you were not voted, you were appointed, right? You are serving your community, and it's really crucial that you hold the trust of those whom you serve, right? And not only that you hold their trust, but you conduct yourself in a way that's conducive for that trust, right? But also that you avoid even the appearance of violating that trust. If you look at that slide, I put in red letters, "You need to avoid conduct which is violation of the public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that your trust is being violated." So that's really interesting, because even if your actions, after having been scrutinized by the Ethics Commission or whoever's scrutinizing it, are in line with the Ethics Act, right? They follow the letter of the law, but if a reasonable person thinks that your behavior is in violation of the Ethics Act, though, gives that appearance, right? Gives that appearance, you're in violation of the Ethics Act. And that happened a couple of years ago with one of our board members, who technically wasn't in violation of the law, but gave that impression, right? And he got swacked with a censure or something like that, I can't remember, but there's penalties involved. So again, thanks for making the time. It's crucial that we all understand this. And I probably sound a little doom and gloom, but the School Ethics Act really is a board member's best friend in a lot of ways, because it establishes a set of standards for all board members to follow, right? No matter whether you serve in Little Tiny Montague or Big Urban Patterson, the School Ethics Commission, your public, the legislature, they all look at you with the same set of eyes. It's the same standards for everyone. They're not different for Verona than they are in Kate May. Everyone is held to the same, even for charter schools, too. I think that's a beautiful thing, and it actually gives us a job description, which we'll get into a little bit more. And for all of those benefits, right, the other thing that you should know about is that your CUSAC score relies upon your adherence to the Ethics Act. Providing this type of conversation, that bumps your CUSAC score up already, so that's good, because you're supposed to talk about this every day. You have to do your mandatory training, we'll talk about that. You have to do your disclosures. I think they're due by the end of this month. I just did mine today, make sure you do that. And also, if you are found in violation of the Act, the whole district suffers. There's points taken off your CUSAC. And for all the work that goes into making this district an effective district as measured by CUSAC, as measured by trend, it is just a shame to see boards fall down on the actions of one individual, right? So again, important stuff that we're going to talk about. You will receive a full copy of the law. It's eight pages, legalese, fine print, and all that, and in that, you will notice, when you read through it, that it establishes all of these things, the disclosure statements that I just mentioned, your mandatory training. We'll talk about the commission a little bit, but also the Code of Ethics in more detail, and what conflicts of interest might be, because that's really going to keep you out of trouble. You don't have to take a screenshot of this or take copious notes. You'll get a copy of this. Your mandatory training as a school board member must be provided by the New Jersey School Boards Association. That's why we exist. We have no regulatory powers. We don't want. We're just here to support you, and part of that support is providing your mandatory training. We're the only outfit that does this. But it's pretty streamlined, it's pretty straightforward. When you're first on the board, you take Governance 1, right? New board member, you need to take it in your first year, you should take it in your first six months. Governance 2 for your second year, Governance 3 for your third year, and then every year thereafter, you're going to be taking Governance 4, which is a legal update in the first year of the term for which you are willing. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
We ran into this, and I don't know if I knew the answer, but what happened with midterm appointments? Wendy, like, we had someone appointed in, I think, March of last year, and she was subsequently reelected, but she had been told she had to do the training in that first portion of the... No. So it's your first full...
It's your first, the law says the first year.
Okay.
Yes, the first year.
So you can wait to be reelected and then complete the training?
I did. You know, I was appointed in March. I didn't get my training done until following January, so...
Okay.
I mean, it may take a little explaining with the Ethics Commission, but you should go through it. Thanks for asking. The commission itself, the one that, you know, the body that we are held accountable to, that determines whether or not you're in violation of the law, is this. Okay, they're a volunteer board that meets monthly. I would say in trend, but they also meet online during the pandemic, and there's supposed to be nine people on it. The governor appoints them, and they serve three-year terms. That being said, I don't know when there were nine members on this commission, but it certainly predates my time at NJSCA, my time on the board. I mean, you know, Patty, when did they ever have nine people on this, right? It's just, yeah, it just hasn't been on any governor's front burner, which is interesting, because, you know, school board meetings have been on the news lately, and all sorts of ethical or perhaps nonethical behavior has been making headlines throughout the state and the country. You would think this would be something to look into and make it sure that we have a full slate, but we simply don't. At this point, I think we have, like, six people on there, and most of their terms have expired, but they're hanging around. When it's fully staffed, though, and even, and I believe that this is the case today as well, you've got five people on there who don't do what you do. They are non-school officials. They are not board members, they are not administrators, they don't sit where you sit. So they're seeing things through a particular lens, and I think that that's very interesting and important to kind of keep in mind. When it's fully staffed, we've got two school board members on it, we've got two school administrators, and right now, I believe we have one school board member and two administrators, I'm pretty sure, two superintendents.
I'm looking.
Yeah, yeah. And the website is, you'll have a link to the website in the copy of the presentation. It is not the easiest thing to navigate. So if you need assistance with that, maybe we can help you out, but even with the board members, even with the commissioners, they don't really update them all that much, so their minutes, it's a little more opaque than I would like it to be, but this is just your basic structure of the commission, and I think it's useful to know. What is really important for you to know is how they do their work, and they do it in two ways. They issue advisory opinions, and they hear and decide upon ethics complaints. So two very different animals, and if you have questions, please just ask me and let me know. We'll talk about advisory opinions first, because that's perhaps the friendlier one. Advisory opinions are just that, they're advice from the commission. So you know I led with, oh, everybody's here to help you and ask questions and this and that. Sometimes, there's going to be an issue where you just aren't getting a clear answer, because it may be new territory, or these issues are very fact-specific, and there may be a lot of gray, a lot of nuance, and we're not quite sure. So are you conflicted or not? Can you do this as a board member, right, and still be in line with the Ethics Act? So what you may want to do, or what you probably do want to do, is ask for an advisory opinion, which is mighty simple. There's no fee or special form or anything like that. There's instructions on this commission's website. It's basically writing a letter, laying out what you're looking to do, and asking whether it's a conflict or not. And when the commission gets to your, you know, your correspondence, meets, discusses it, writes you back, and it gives you good advice, and it's never punitive, even if they say, you know, "Nope, nope, nope, don't do that, that's just wrong for a number of reasons," they just trust it. You're going to do what they instruct you to do, and they don't send the board police out to the next meeting to make sure you don't do it. They just trust you're going to do it, right? And it's all good, and you can ask about yourself, you can ask about a fellow board member, but it has to be, you know, confined to the people around the space, right? Like, I can't, you know, you can't ask about Patterson, right? You can only ask about the one. And if you're asking about a fellow board member, you need to copy the board member on, and the commission needs to see that you're doing it. But it's all good. It's all good. The advice that they give you may wind up on the School Ethics Commission's website to guide other boards and board members who find themselves in the same situation, but it's scrubbed. The details come out, the names, the district, you know, identifying details, they don't appear as part of that, you know, addition to the commission's website. So all of those things are very different from ethics complaints. Starting with, a complaint is dealing with something that has already happened, as opposed to an advisory opinion where you're considering something, right? So the horse has left the barn, and you made somebody angry, and they're going to file an ethics complaint against you. That's what an ethics complaint is. And anyone can file an ethics complaint against you. It doesn't have to be a fellow board member or someone in this room, it can be anyone. It can be staff member, parent, fellow board member, sure, good governance watchdog, someone who's reading the papers, anyone. And if you are found to have been in violation of the Act, and it takes a long time to find out, because it's got to go through the whole process, everybody lawyers up, of course, the district's money, you know, there is a penalty involved, absolutely. It's not monetary, you'll pay through the nose for your lawyers that are representing you, you know, money that could be better spent in the classroom, but when the commission recommends a penalty, they don't attach a bond to it. The penalty at the low end is a reprimand, you know, it's just a letter between you and the commissioner of education saying how bad you are, and it goes on their website at the School Ethics Commission, but that's kind of that. A censure is a few steps above that, in that the board president has to read at a meeting, you know, just how bad you've been and why, and that you've been penalized. You could even be taken off your board for a length of time, you could be suspended for a short term, or if the behavior is really egregious, you could be removed. The commission recommends those penalties, but the commissioner of education's on the line. It's a long process, and the board operates under a cloud the whole time. So, you know, it's really, this training is valuable. I hope so. I just wanted to go there. This is what the SEC was doing last year. They published seven advisory opinions out of the 20 that they were requested. They removed people, absolutely. They took people for not doing their disclosure statements and for not doing their mandatory training. But as far as the ethics violations, right, whether they're conflicts or violations of Code of Ethics, they heard 29 of those cases, and 21 of them were dismissed. Six of them resulted in penalties. It settled on two of them. We'll talk about those in a little bit. What I want to do now is just go through the Code of Ethics, because this is where we start, if you're being brought up on ethics charges, there's a violation here somewhere, either in the Code of Ethics or in conflict. So we'll start with the code, and it's built into the School Ethics Act, subsections A through J, right? Some of them are a lot easier to digest than others, and hopefully, some of them will become easier to digest than others, now that we are moving past a lot of the executive orders that our public did not really take to... I'm using my words carefully, either. But this subsection A, right, I never used to talk much about it, because it's basically, I'll follow the law, you know? If the court tells me to do it, I'll do it. If the state board tells me to do it, I'll do it. If the legislature, the governor tells me to, I'll do it. And executive orders have to force law. So a lot of people in the public were just not really accepting of that, and figured that board members should do what they needed, what they felt was right, whether it was in accordance with executive orders or not, and board members just couldn't do that. If you were to violate an executive order, you're in violation of the Ethics Act, and that's a penalty for your whole district, and I'm not just talking about monetary penalties either. B, though, is my favorite. I love B, so I'm happy to talk a little bit more about B than A, because this is why you do what you do, right? You're here to serve on the school board, to make terms, decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and this makes it plain that you're making your decisions in terms of the educational welfare of all children, right? Which is a beautiful thing. I smile every time I talk about it, because it's quite a calling. It really is. It can be very difficult, but that's the mantle that we kick enough, where you could be able to hope, just say, yep, this is what I'm going to do, and we're all here to support you doing that. You also have to keep in mind, though, as you go through your board meetings, as you comment on agenda items, as you work through the decisions that you're making as a board, is to make sure you don't give the appearance that you're in violation of B. And one of the things that I, I know everyone's well-intentioned, right, but a lot of times I'll hear people saying, "Well, my son didn't like the field trip. My daughter says the cafeteria duty is disgusting." You know, my kid, my kid, my kid, my kid. And I get that. I was a parent in my district when I was a board member, but you have to keep in mind that that is not giving an appearance that aligns with subsection B. So be careful on that. Be careful. To give the appearance of violating this thing is trash, right? That's pretty bad. C starts with the nitty-gritty of the job description, right? So as a board member, you are going to confine your board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. That's it. That's all we do, right? And I know board members feel really passionately about the school district that they serve in, and sometimes they try to go a little bit outside the lines, or even a lot outside the lines. No reason, no reason, because of all the people that you serve, you know, only the people here can make the decisions on your agenda items, right? And I think that that's a wonderful thing. It requires a 30,000 code unit, though, right? So, and that's where the Ethics Act keeps us in line. So policymaking, planning, appraisal, right? Policymaking, you know that. Planning, your budget, right? There's a prime example of that. Appraisal, your superintendent evaluation. That's how we put that in our works. That's macro, not the micro, right? And D, veterans have heard this a million times, and like I say, it's worth repeating every single time you hear it. You, as a board member, will carry out your responsibility not to learn the schools, but to see that they are well-run, together with your fellow board members, right? Like I said, people are really passionate, and they want to get involved in the smaller details of the school district, the everyday stuff, the quotidian decisions or school-specific decisions, and that's just not our job. They have to. Why do we have a board made up of lazy people? Because we have the educational leader of our district, Ed DeHaven, right? Sitting at the front of the board table, giving us his perspective, his advice, his guidance, and you ultimately rely on him, right? He's the educational leader. He's the individual who impacts your students the most, right? We've got that sort of stuff. So I love E. I think E's a great one, even though it gets violated all the time, along with E, right? And E, we'll talk more about social media. Social media has been just so terrible for E, but you recognize as a board member that you don't have any authority. It's the board that has the authority. When you walk out of here, you're just as, you know, regular Joe, as the person who works in the bakery down the street, or downstairs here, or anywhere, right? Because your authority comes into play more when you're voting on agenda items, right? And that's a beautiful thing. Like I said, out of all the people that you serve, only you guys can participate in that process, but it's a joint effort. It is a team sport, as I said before. So you don't go out into, you know, the supermarket and guarantee somebody a job. You don't go on social media and say something that, you know, that makes the board look bad, or gives the impression that you are the Hawthorne Board of Education, and that may take a little bit of time for people to get their sea legs on, but that's mighty important, because compromising the board has really bad consequences beyond your CUSAC score, believe me. F, again, like, F was one of those ones that I'd just gloss over, like, enough said, right? Independent judgment, nothing, you know, political, because the board isn't a political entity. Politics don't come into play. But it's 2021, and I'm seeing just so many newspaper articles, examples of politics reaching their way into board governance, and so I always make a point doing these ethics presentations now, to just say outright that this is no place for political activity, you know, and that's, and your students will be, you know, will have to eat that rotten food if it does kind of come into play. There's just no, there's just no other way to say it. G is super verbose, but it comes down to just two words, honestly, and that's confidentiality and truth, right? So anything that goes on in the executive session stays an executive session. If you don't tell your spouse, you don't tell your, you know, your buddy over coffee who's not on the board, this is, that is board business, and confidential matters typically show, you know, are very, very sensitive, right? Very sensitive, and they involve people at a low point, right, in their career, in their lives, and, you know, their child rearing. And that's confidentiality and truth, right? So anything that goes on in the executive session stays in executive session. If you don't tell your spouse, you don't tell your, you know, your buddy over coffee who's not on the board, this is, that is board business. And confidential matters particularly show, you know, are very, very sensitive, right? Very sensitive. And they involve people at a low point, right? In their career, in their lives, in, you know, their child-rearing. So to leak that kind of information, even inadvertently, you don't want to do it, not just because you want to stay in, you know, in line with the School Ethics Act, although you do, but it also has a community. And then all other matters, you know, when you're approaching the supermarket, or, you know, in a phone call, or by your spouse, or by, you know, a parent, you know, on the soccer field, and they ask about board business, you provide truthful and accurate information about that. And that also can be kind of tricky. Because you can't have your own viewpoint be taken as board business, right? Your viewpoint is expressed in the board's, expressed in board meetings, not in casual conversation with others. So that can be a pretty tricky line to walk. But if your comments are misinterpreted, then you may be looking at a penalty for this affecting the whole district. H, I love because this is one of the reasons why we can be a board of laypeople, right? You don't have to have a career in education to be an excellent board member. But part of running an excellent school district is excellent hires. And how would I, as someone who spent my career in retail banking, know how to identify an excellent hire for my school district? Guess what? I wouldn't, right? And that's no shame on me. That is, you know, the way the system is set up. Your educational leader can make those recommendations and needs to make those recommendations. You can't vote on a personnel consideration like that. So I love H. I also love I because I gets you out of a lot of conversations that we really don't want to be in when someone approaches you at, you know, a New Year's Eve party and is trying to get you into a conversation about, "What do you think of that soccer coach?" "Oh, you know, bloody, but..." Just say, "Oh, I'm so sorry, but ethically, I just can't participate in this conversation." And you'd be telling them the God's honest truth. You need to protect and support your school personnel and proper performance of your duties. And anything that's starting to smell like it might go the other way, you've got to get out of there, right? So rely on I. It's a beautiful thing. But when you do hear complaints, because you will, because you will, remember, we've got that 30,000-foot view, right? We don't get involved in quotidian decision-making, or school-level decision-making, or, you know, department-level decision-making. That's for the superintendent. So we do need to let them know what we've heard, right? And then just back off to say, "I heard from my neighbor X." And don't say, "I heard from my neighbor X. So here's her number, call her, fix it, let me know how it's..." Like, none of that. Just what the issue was and back off. In the meantime, in the meantime, when you do hear these complaints, because you will, and I'm sure you have, you just need to guide the complaint community. And that requires a little bit of finesse because, you know, someone's put their sign on there. Well, on, you know, they campaigned for you, rallied for you, and now all of a sudden, you're going to ignore them? Like, you don't want to give them that impression. But you can't give them the wrong impression that you can solve any of these issues, right? It's just not your job. So just explaining what the job of a board member is always a good thing to be proactive about during your campaigning, during your service. But when you're hit with concerns, let them know. Okay, so you have a complaint about a teacher, start with the teacher. Advance to the principal, you know, advance to the superintendent. If all other avenues have been exhausted, right? That's how complaints are addressed, not with the board of education. The only time the board might act on something like that is when there is a failure of an administrative solution. Which is not an unpopular administrative solution, right? There's going to be solutions that people don't particularly care for, but they are solutions that are offered by educational professionals or educational leader. And we live with that. We live with that, right? And the board, you know, stays within its limits. And that's a good one. And that's a good one. Any questions on any of our business? I told you this would be boring, right? But the decisions from last year got a little bit exciting. Like everybody's bad behavior from last year, so that's kind of fun. Threatening a coach's job, guess what? That's bad, right? So that person got suspended for three months. This is interesting, though, because I know this board member. She's a good board member, but her daughter worked in the school district. And when you have someone belonging to you who works in your school district, you need to recuse yourself from certain things. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. One of them had, is the superintendent's compensation. And this board member inadvertently, you know, participated in a roll call vote on superintendent's miracles. That was wrong, okay, so she received a reprimand. And as far as conflicts go, a board member who was a minister, you know, participated in the vote for his school district to allow the church, that paid him a stipend for a salary, to use the facilities. Now, he should have abstained from that, and he got a reprimand. More interesting, I may say so myself, are the next few decisions, right? And we start talking about politics and social media. So this one wasn't social media. This is actually a good old paper flyer, printed and distributed in new Tuscany, New Jersey, right? And it was endorsing, well, actually kind of an anti-endorsement of a particular political party. And the language is very incendiary. It was like this, "These people are elected. Now, our town's going to suffer. They hate this particular religious group." Stuff you heard before, probably newspapers and this and that. And it's just the nature of politics these days. But the problem with this particular thing is that three elected officials from Tuscany put their name and their picture and their title on that flyer. And one of them was a board member, a school board member. And this was very embarrassing for the school board. They did not endorse this way of thinking. There was no mention of this type of thinking from the day. It's not part of the board's work. So yeah, that compromised the work of the board. And this person was, you know, found to have violated E, F, and G, right? And he got a censure, but I think that's because he's not on the board any longer. A lot of times, these cases take a long time to win their way through the decision-making process, and people just aren't serving other kind of decisions or whatever. And this one, we start going into a little bit more, you know, election shenanigans. I don't know what the right word for it. But this was one of those hyper-local news sites where they publish, you know, letters to the editor and this and that. And you can endorse someone for political office or for the school board. But when you do that, you have to make it plain to everyone who will come across that message that, yes, I'm on the school board, but I'm speaking as an individual. And what I say does not reflect the opinion of my board fellow board members or the board itself. This gentleman, who wrote an op-ed endorsing a candidate for a school board membership, put this disclaimer, right? So good. Why is he, why am I talking about him? Because when you read the op-ed, it was all, "As a board member, I this. As a board member, I would be embarrassed if so-and-so..." As a board, in fact, and the endorsement that he was making was for arrival of an incumbent, right? Someone that he had to sit next to at the day. So he's like making all sorts of fun of her and this and that. It was not good. And the commission's like, you know, when you talk to talk, you have to walk to walk. And if you don't, you're getting a penalty. So, yep, he got a reprimand too. And we talk about him from one end of the state to the other in our ethics presentations. And the board member who, on his personal Facebook page, made anti-Muslim, racist, incendiary, and other offensive comments. Thank heavens, you know, that person was found to have violated the School Ethics Act. Because I'm telling you, social media has just been a real, my guilt. You're nodding. You know this, right? Everybody knows this. I don't know why. A part of me really doesn't know why. Because I'm just not one of those people who enjoys a good argument, right? That's based on my First Amendment rights. Because once someone says "First Amendment rights," you know what's coming, right? It's not "First Amendment's rights, I need to get my head right," right? It's not that. It's something else. It's something that's going to affect. And as a board member, those offensive comments can compromise the public's trust in you and in your board. So you have to be super careful. That's why I say stay off of social media, because you can avoid it. But you don't have to, right? You can be a responsible user of social media. There's a lot of good things about it, especially if you're campaigning, right? I could never have won my last election without my Facebook page. No way. No way. But you've got to be careful. So here's the recommended disclaimer, which is pretty much what I explained to you before. But you have to abide by it. You have to abide by it. And I'm really, I get, I mean, I was going to say, please. It's sad to read it, but I'm glad to be able to read this language from a decision from the Ethics Commission that addressed social media specifically. Because for a while there, we were looking for a language that addresses bad behavior on social media. And it wasn't very forthcoming. However, in the Sayini versus Tofano case, Mr. Tofano was just one of those people who likes a good First Amendment-based argument, where you're saying all sorts of offensive stuff about someone's religion, their national origin, or this or that, right? First Amendment. So the commission weighed in and said that the school board member is a publicly-elected school official who is charged with serving the educational needs of a diverse, dynamic, and multifaceted student population. So public boards, which derogate from the mission of a board of education, serve no purpose, create unnecessary hostility and animosity within a community, and ultimately have the greatest detrimental effect on the very people that the respondent, the school board member, is cast to serve for the students. And although the School Ethics Commission acknowledges this sanctity, that's an important word, of the First Amendment, words that deliberately cause divisiveness should have no place in the education system. So the commission has spoken. Everyone should be hearing this. I'm pleased to bring it to as many boards as I can, especially in public meetings, so the public can use this. And what is also very interesting to me about this language is that your Facebook page, your Twitter account, your Instagram is now part of the educational background. Very interesting. Because this was on Mr. Tofano's personal Facebook page, personal Facebook page. So just be careful with social media, right? And that kind of wraps up the code of ethics. But I do want to touch on conflicts of interest. This can be very gray, though, very, very nuanced. And often, you'll need your school board attorney's guidance here, right? Because in the law, you'll see, lays out conflicts of interest, and here's the list, right? Some of them are kind of no brainers, like a gift that's offered with the intent to influence, like, "That's bad. That creates a conflict. How do you like that?" But what about something that made prejudice independent judgment? Not really sure, right? So, hmm, don't know. Don't know. Wish that were more clearly defined. So we have to look to, you know, previously-published advisory opinions or decisions that have come out of the commission. And obviously, some legal advisory, the board is very well-versed in this stuff. But we also have to keep in mind what the definition of family members are, right? And the different types of family members. Remember, I told you about my board member who voted inadvertently on the superintendent's miracles? Her daughter worked in the district. Well, that's kind of important to keep an eye on where everybody's family works, right? So there's two definitions that we have to be cognizant of. One is immediate family, which is your spouse or your dependent child who lives with you. And that's that. Your mother is not a member of your immediate family member, according to the School Ethics Commission. She is merely a relative, right there with your nephew, right there with your step-grandchild, and your siblings, and everybody else in this big tent, right? Which also includes other, by the way. You know, because an ex-spouse has been deemed a relative in at least one school ethics decision, right? So all of these people are relatives, right? It's interesting because cousin is not specifically listed here, but there have been decisions which identify a cousin as a relative. So keep that in mind as well, whether they're related to you or your spouse by blood, marriage, or adoption. That's a relative. And the reason why we want to make sure we know who's who and where they work is because you may be precluded from participating in certain types of votes, right? Depending on who works where. So if you've got somebody belonging to you, a relative, immediate family member, big thing, right? Who works in a law firm, you cannot participate in anything that has to do with superintendent's compensation, or hire, or review, nothing like that, right? So you're out from start to finish. Do not participate in that. However, what, you know, the bigger question sometimes is, or it affects more people, is who participates in collective bargaining, right? So this chart, which you'll get a copy of, came right from a school ethics commission's decision. And it's a beautiful thing, right? It lays out who can participate in what. Notice, there's all sorts of asterisks all over there, right? But, but, this is the most recent guidance that we have. If you have anyone who works in the school district, you are out of negotiations from start to finish. If you or your immediate family member, who's unionized, works in another school district, right? My husband works in Cedar Grove, right, as a teacher, then I can't participate in Warren Township's collective bargaining agreement with the teachers, right? Until, until the very last vote. So, you know, your memorandum of agreement is ready to go. Your salary guides are all decided upon. It just needs that last vote. Then I'm back and I can participate in that last vote. If I have somebody in the big definition of relative, like my sister-in-law works in Compton Lakes, I can participate in collective bargaining from start to finish, right? And when I'm saying this, when I'm saying this, if my sister-in-law, if my spouse is a teacher, then I can't participate in teacher negotiations until the last step, right? But I can participate in a ministry negotiation, right? And heads over. But if they work out of district, I'm all good, okay? The relative, I'm all good. However, if they're active in their own union, if they're on their own union's negotiations scheme, I may be conflicted because the Ethics Commission identified some other possible conflicts that may come your way if you have a relative or spouse who works out of district. So just keep these things in mind, all right? Also, advisory opinion 1018, that's an interesting one that I might mention to you. You can, as a candidate, obtain the endorsement of your local union. That's fine. But if you do, you have to sit out the next round of negotiations. That particular case is worth a read because in this particular case, a school board member was up for reelection and was unconfessed. He also served on his district's negotiations committee. And the union and the board were involved in protracted, you know, negotiations, kind of contentious here and there. And when this gentleman's name was the only one that landed on the ballot, so it was like, shoot. The union approached him and said, "We'd like to endorse you." "We'd like to give you money for your campaign. We'd like to come out and help." Nope. He said, "Thanks anyway. Don't mean it. Don't want it." And they, you know, couldn't force money on him, but they printed up all sorts of literature for their membership to say, you know, so-and-so, you know, Jimmy Jones, he's the best. Vote for Jimmy Jones. And then when Jimmy got on the board, they said, "Ah, so sorry that you can't participate in negotiations because, you know, he endorsed you, so oops, you know? Sorry, you're out." And Jimmy, or whatever the heck his name was, because this was an advisory opinion. His name was scrubbed out. Said, "Oh, no, you don't. Oh, no, you don't." And he asked for an advisory opinion from the commission, and they said, "Yeah." That wasn't enforced. So just be mindful of those sorts of things. Very interesting. When you go on the Ethics Commission's website, as difficult as that can be to navigate through, there's all sorts of very interesting decisions on there. And if you're very geeky like me, it's an endless source of amusement. And it just keeps getting better and better every single year, right? Doctrine of necessity is something that comes up when you have a majority of board member resources. And I don't think that's the case here. Am I right?
No, we came close. But we're good.
You're good, so I will save everybody, spare everyone from that. And just kind of wrap things up with volunteerism. I just want to let you know that we don't want to turn a good thing into a bad thing, right? For years, there was no prohibition on board members volunteering in a school district until someone did something, right? And the commission found out about it and they said, "Huh, how do you like that?" Well, we don't want anyone else to be like this particular board member who went into the district and caused all sorts of havoc. So, board members, if you're looking to volunteer in your school, one-time events... are fine, chaperoning, it's all good. But we came up with a list based on those advisory opinions that you can read, they're all captioned up there. But basically, ask yourself these seven questions. And if your answers dovetail with the answers on this slide, you are good to go. Basically, if people are seeing you in the school all the time, and it looks like you work there, and you're giving directions to students and staff, that's not your role, so you can't do that. You cannot touch the school district's money, right? You can't be the lead advisor for a school district club, but you can be a boy scout leader, you can coach direct basketball, use the same kids, same facilities, but it's a different board, it's zone buy laws, and it's own bank accounts, so you can do that. So just, you know, like I said, make sure you're not taking something that's good and turning it into something bad. And speaking of, you know, something that could be good and turning it into something bad, a lot of times, the Ethics Commission red flags interview committees, don't really like them. They came, they stop short of saying that board members cannot participate on interview committees, because really, the hiring process is the purview of the superintendent, right? What he says, and what he would like board members to weigh in through participation on interview committees, he can ask for that. But the ask has to come from your superintendent. And the Commission has also issued some guidance about what you can do, like, you can't really participate actively in interviewing, you can offer your thoughts, there can't be more than two people, blah, 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 blah. If you don't have interview committees here, that simplifies your life. Otherwise, read through these decisions, make sure your actions are in line with, with the advice in these advisory opinions, you'll be good. But one area that was not great at all is exit interviews. And it's very interesting to compare these decisions and how long they are to the exit interview decision. The exit interview was like, "Nope, that's, that's none of your business. That's administrative, sorry, that puts up against the..." So it kind of, it's just interesting to see the way, you know, the Ethics Commission will give guidance that might not be what we think, based on the readings of other decisions. So become familiar with their work. Points to consider when you're, you know, when you're conducting yourselves as a board member, and you want to make sure that you are not in violation, or even close to violating the Ethics Act, right? You'll have this, you'll forget everything, "I said, 'I went off for 50 million years,'" right? But ask for help, ask for help. You know, ask the board attorney for guidance when necessary. Read your school board notes, if anything is new and different and exciting in the world of ethics, it's gonna be in there. And keep a list of where everybody works and what they do, just to protect, you know, the integrity of your, of your collective bargaining agreements and the votes that you make as board members. And that's kind of that on ethics. So thank you, thank you, and say bye. But I appreciated, you know, getting it out there, because that protects you, protects your district, and I know that it's kind of a minefield out there, I've done it myself. I'm excited to, so let us know about it. And that's for ethics, so...
Thank you so much, Kathy. I have a question.
Yes.
We have a policy committee that has circled the drain for many years, particularly on the policy relating to board members' acceptable use on social media. My takeaway from this presentation is that the Ethics Act pretty much covers that, and that we don't need a separate policy. I just wanted your take on that.
Well, you don't need to have a separate policy, right? That's true, because, you know, your policy has to dovetail with the law, and if you have a policy that's out of sorts of law, it's not going to stick, right? And I don't know what your policy says, but it's healthy to have one that just kind of lays it out there, so you don't have to parse through, you know, the Ethics Commission's opinions on social media, or go through, you know, what did Kathy say? So, I mean, there is some real benefit to that. The problem is, if I may be so candid, okay, and I almost hate to say this, is it's difficult to enforce that policy.
And that, therein lies the circling of the drain. Who, who policies that? Is there a, who's the reporter? Who is it reported to? This has been the conversation.
The Ethics Commission, the Ethics Commission. If the horse has left the barn, and someone's made a post on social media that you fellow board members are, you know, see as very problematic, your only choice is to file an complaint against that person, and have the Commission weigh in. You could ask for an advisory opinion before something goes up, right? There's no guarantee, though, that the Ethics Commission won't cover it. They may say, "Oh, we've not covered the district," and not give you the point of guidance that we want. So it's kind of tricky. It's kind of tricky. The board cannot take, become its own ethics speech.
Right.
So a social media usage policy, like the heart of it, is backing this up, right? So you can't, you know, censure a board member for violating something that falls under the Code of Ethics per se, as a board, that has to come from the Ethics Commission. And the process for that was really ugly.
Right.
Unexpensive. And I'm sorry to give you the bad news. I wish I could say, "Oh, yeah, do that, because I love it. Like, nothing better." But I've got to be honest with you, it's not a slam dunk.
We, we, we see the value in, in keeping, just reminding ourselves of the oath of allegiance, that we will try to stay true to those Code of Ethics, but we ran into the problem that you just brought up. You know, what, what is the outcome if there is a breach? And it sounds like it's a Code of Ethics issue at that point, and that it's covered under the Code of Ethics anyway.
It is, it is. You're absolutely right. And, you know, the other thing really is that what's valuable about having that policy and making, you know, a show of it, you know, not to speak disparagingly, is that if somebody violates it locally, it, it is illustrative to the people who put them there, you know? I mean, part of the process in weighing in on whether or not you're, you know, ethical belongs to the electorate. You know, they're willing to decide amongst themselves whether they like your ethics or not. So it's kind of a useful tool in the toolkit in that way. It's embarrassing, you know, to violate your own board's pop. Well, I'm saying that as a reasonable person, Kathy, I've got it. And a lot of people just don't think like me, right? They, 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 that's like, I'm not saying that that happens here, but, you know, some of this stuff is like, you know, they gobble up, get up like gasoline on a fire, you know? They thrive on this stuff. So that's another reason why that policy can be a little too...
I did have a question from one of the board members at home.
Oh, great.
And that is, who would validate the conflicts? Would that be our board attorney, or would, yes? So if we're in question, the avenue, the proper avenue would be to contact the board attorney with?
Absolutely, that's the best one. Some real obvious ones, I could answer for you, but rarely are they obvious.
Okay.
And your attorney will always give you the best guidance, always. Information NJASBA can help you with, but if they're starting to start, cross over the lines of guidance, or, you know, advice, they're gonna take it back to your board attorney, so may as well start there. This is really important. So thanks for the question.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions on the ethics piece of this?
How much time do I have left on the round?
Thirty minutes.
Ooh, okay, so...
The speed round.
Oh, that's fine. Robert's Rules, let's, let's speed through that. I'm only gonna give Robert's Rules maybe. I'm gonna keep it less than thirty, because we want to talk strategically.
We do, we want it to be set up a cursory timeline, yeah.
Now, Robert's Rules is a great thing, I love Robert's Rules, it keeps your meetings orderly, and, you know, so how valuable can that be? You know, absolutely. But it's guidelines, right? They're mostly black and white, so I don't think I need to go through it too closely. Your strategic plan, however, that's a homegrown, you know, district-specific endeavor, very, very rewarding, and I'd love to, I don't want to shortchange that. So, and again, you'll get a copy of all this, and it condenses for you Robert's Rules of Order, which is gigantic and huge, right? So you don't, the good news is, you don't have to know all of this to navigate through Robert's Rules effectively. It's kind of like when you're seeing a mixing board with all those knobs and dials and all this, but really, you only need to, like, you know, have these three or four of them, and you're good, right? You can broadcast. But there's a lot of options. That's kind of what Robert's Rules is like. It's just a set of proven rules to keep your meetings moving along, and to also, what's really important, to take the emotion out of the meetings, to keep it to the business at hand. That's the value of Robert's Rules. And to be, and, you know, it was the genesis for it, couldn't have been a more emotionally explosive situation. This gentleman, Henry Martin Robert, who is the Robert of Robert's Rules, he wrote it in 1876, and I think he lived in Fallworth when he actually wrote it, he lived in Burnham County. He, he wrote them because early in his army career, he was asked to facilitate, preside over a meeting, a meeting in a church about abolition, right? And he was from, he was from the South, Southern origins, but his family had moved to the North because of slavery. So it was a very explosive issue, very close to his heart, and he was like, all day, he's gonna go in there and, you know, get this useful meeting, and everybody's gonna be heard, and he's gonna come to some really useful conclusions on a very important topic. And the meeting was an absolute mess, nothing to rely upon. He said, his embarrassment was supreme. And no minutes were taken of that, but there are reports that it went over, that it went up to six hours, this meeting. So, no good, no good. So he came up with parliamentary procedure, and that avoids all of this business, right? That's why we love Robert's Rules, it's about structure and keeping order. Everybody has an opportunity to participate, right? But using Robert's Rules, the will of the majority is protected, but the rights of the minor are protected, right? So five principles, right? It's one subject at a time, you know, everybody gets a chance to participate, everyone has equal rights. And, you know, again, there's no personality of individuals here, it's about the political order. And so in order to keep that order, parliamentary procedure relies on motions. Learning and understanding those is your key to success here. And like I said, don't be overwhelmed, right? So we know what quorum is, right? It's the amount of people who, you know, constitute an equal voting, so that's what we have to, that's what we're starting with. Without a quorum, you can do a few things like these things, right? All sorts of, you know, informal, but when we have the agenda in front of us, right? That's where we start, we're working on our Robert's Rules, right? The agenda lists all the topics that are going to be discussed, right? It's developed by your superintendent, your board president, it's heavily important to your bylaws, right? Best practice is to, you know, is to approve it at the beginning of the meeting, you can change the order with a two-thirds vote, why you might, I don't know, you know, your presenter is late, something like that. But as far as motions go, there are five different types. And the one that is most important to learn, which you use most of the time, is your main motion, right? There's also subsidiary, the religion, incidental, bring-backs, they'll all be in the presentation, right? Main motion introduces a topic, and you have to work your way through the main motion before you take something else up. They require a first, they require a second, and then the presider must ask for discussion, and discussion may or may not ensue. Orderly discussion relies on your adherence to Robert's Rules. Comments should be directed to the board president, the union presider, that's what discussion is. It doesn't work like discussion in a coffee shop, right? Discussion is, "Madam President, make my point." Say, "Thank you." Another person says, "Madam President, address her." And you support it. And you look, if you're really strict about Robert's Rules, you're looking at the board president, you're not even mentioning my name. Like, I might say, "Madam President, my colleague made an important point." It's, but it's not like, it's not informal, it's not, you know, "Yeah, what she said." Or me going back and forth to you. It's me going to you, that's how, that's how it works. And it's, you know, when you have your agenda in front of you, the president said, "May I have a motion, I've seen this here, it's seconded." You restate the motion, you ask for discussion, and then once that discussion is over, you call the question, and the vote's taken and dismissed, right? So here's, using lingo, we get this, I've just seen this here today, right? So debating is where it can get a little crazy, unless you're using Robert's Rules, or at least adhering to Robert's Rules. You know, again, you know, these are guidelines, they're not laws, they're not laws. So it's just, it's a tool, it's a tool. And here are some of the principles involved, you know? Your debate should be confined to the question being considered, otherwise it becomes a little mess. Robert's Rules requires that. Again, you're using names, all of that stuff, or much addressed to you. It's all about serenity, right? So even super dysfunctional boards can be functional if they follow these guidelines. But let's say there's something in the main motion that you disagree with. You don't like the content of it, or you notice a typo, or the date's wrong or something. So that's where you offer a subsidiary motion while you're completing the main motion. And in that case, let's kind of take an example. This is back a few years ago, you know, someone moves that, you know, we go to standard-based report cards for this school year, but they got the dates wrong. Someone seconded it, the board president, you know, asked for discussion, and someone says, "You know what? There was an error, I move to amend that line," right? So amended to change it to the 2018, 19, or whatever school year that you're in, right? Someone seconds it, and you can debate that as well. And that comes in handy when you're looking to change the content of something, right? Change the content of a policy or something like that. That's subsidiary motion. But once you pass that, or not, let's just say that guessing, the vote was taken on the change only, you go back to the main motion. You go back to the main motion to see if you're going to decide if you table or not on that particular agenda. And there's other subsidiary motions, right? And these are very handy, okay? To table something, sets it aside during that meeting. I know people say table, and what they really mean is to postpone, right? But table technically means to push it aside until later in the meeting. If you want to kill something, you postpone it indefinitely. If you want to table something the way we normally use a term table, like just push it off till our next meeting, or after the committee meets and talks about it, you move to postpone indefinitely, right? And you mention when the board's gonna take that business up, you can refer to a committee, or, "Oh my God, we just had enough of all this talk about this motion, my God, can we move on?" You call the question. And again, you call it, every board member has the right to call the question, however, the board has to vote on that, right? You don't just call the question and stop the debate, right? So you vote on it, and it works, it works, and it doesn't, it doesn't, you back to talking about it.
Kathy, could I stop you for one second?
Sure.
So we use something like "call the question," we've never done anything like this. One of us said, "I'd like to call the question." Is that me passing the motion, and then someone says, "Second?"
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, you do. You say, "There's a motion to call the question, and I have a second."
Okay.
Second, second. There are incidental motions as well. These are, you know, point of order, right? If there's some kind of a breach of rules, like not, you know, there was no second on that, or we don't need a second for nominating a board president or vice president, that, that's an incidental motion. You can withdraw something. A point of information is kind of interesting. Point of order, I think we've seen this, I'm illustrating that, but a, do a privilege, where's my one about the fan? Okay, yep, here it is. So you could also have a question of privilege, where you say, "Look, it's, it's hot in here, let's open a window, the fan is too loud, I can't see, blah, blah, blah." That's a privilege motion as well. And the board president decides on that, there's no debate, there's no vote. Bringing back motions are worth a mention, because sometimes a board needs, you know, you may feel like the board needs to revisit its board. And there are ways to do that, right? There are ways to do that. We talked about tabling, right? So you push it aside and you bring it back. We talked about, you know, about postponing indefinitely or indefinitely, which kills something. But there are two things called rescinding reconsider. So if something was adopted at a previous meeting, right? Motion carried, you don't like, you're having a rough time living with it, you could make a motion to rescind, right? You could make a motion. If that's happened, it's not a sign of a real healthy board. If that's happened, it's not a sign of a real healthy board, but it's out there. A motion to reconsider is different. It's on a previously decided motion at the same meeting. And it has to come from someone who voted in favor of, well, actually, on the prevailing side, right? So recid is only on motions that have passed. Reconsider could be on something that went either way. And let me explain how that might work. You have your agenda, you voted on it, and someone comes to public comment and makes a comment. Even though they had the opportunity for, you know, agenda items only, for whatever reason, they didn't take that, they're rushing it at the last minute. They give you something to consider, and you're like, wow, I shouldn't have voted that way. And I voted on the prevailing side. I voted to pass, but now I'm seeing we shouldn't have passed that. I can make a motion to reconsider. And if the board, you know, the board takes it up, then you have to vote on the item. Motion to reconsider. So that's just kind of interesting. Voting methods, a secret ballot is not allowed in New Jersey, but all of these other ones are allowed, right? Ty vote means the motion does not pass, right? There's also different voting requirements, and I'll send you a full list of that. But some of these minimum requirements are important to know out of the gate. You know, there's all different requirements. But extensions, extensions are not a vote. They may be due to a conflict, like we were just deciding, like we were just discussing. Perhaps you don't have enough knowledge to make a decision at the time, and then you can abstain. But these should not be, if I may be so direct, you know, chicken votes, you know, chicken extensions, you know? They should not be used to shy away from a hot vote. You're going to abstain because you don't have enough knowledge to make a decision. You really do think it includes you to stake that on the basis so that your constituents know why you are abstaining. I am telling you, I had to abstain once on closing a school. I knew it would be a really bad book for me. It would improve. The board was putting forth something, but we didn't have enough time to debate it, right? So I think the extension was proper. They'd be doing it, but I felt they were out of it. So that might be something that kind of, if you're conflicted, say that you're conflicted. And there's no one, no one will help on that. So if we're looking at a couple of these tricky votes, right? If you have one that, let's just say that the standard face report cards, if you had four yeses, one no, and one extension, does the motion pass? No, it doesn't pass. There's no majority there. Personnel hires, you can, it is not just a matter of a simple majority. So we need two thirds. So if we have Jesse Adams being on the agenda as a facilities director, we have three extensions, whether they do conflicts or not, four yeses and two no's, that motion does not pass. So again, it's kind of tricky. But learning, you know, the ins and outs of Robert's Rules will prepare you for these sorts of things. Elections, keep this in mind for your, for your rework. You know, no seconds are required when you're looking to establish who's going to be your president or vice president. You can even nominate yourself if you want. I don't know how well that's going to go if you feel like you have to nominate yourself. Good luck with that vote, but you can do it. Robert's Rules allows it. But it's, you nominate one member at a time. And as those nominations are proffered, then that's how, that's how it works, right? So if Kathy's nominated, first you vote first on Kathy. If Kathy, if the majority wants Kathy to be board president, then you're done, right? If not, then you refuse it. Minutes, I like to talk about minutes. You know, because these have become under scrutiny in the past, in the recent past. But minutes, friends, they are a record. They're not a recording. I don't know if you've ever looked at Patterson's minutes. They are transcripts of their recordings. You can't find anything in there. Like, I don't know how to support votes because I have to read through eighty pages of transcripts. That's not the way minutes are supposed to really be in accordance with Robert's Rules. It's a record of what was done, not what was said, right? So how did your board vote? That's what minutes are supposed to record. Not what Kathy says, not what the discussion was, what the vote was. There is one, well, public comments, just a topic and overview. And of course, you identify you need a public comment. But the only, the only, where am I? Oops, where am I going? What do you, I'm advanced at this. If you're going into closed session and you don't feel that that's the right thing for the board to do, that the topic is not one for closed session, and you note that objection, that should be, that's the only exception to that, right? Approving the minutes, I saw you guys approve your minutes by vote, although perfectly fine. But there's other ways of doing it, and you don't have to abstain from approving the minutes if you weren't there. Because a vote to approve the minutes is just a vote in the veracity of the process, right? If you had a meeting, then your board secretary has a good process for recording and for taking the minutes. And, you know, that they, and then you trust the board secretary basically. So even if you weren't there, you don't have to abstain on voting the minute, on approving the minutes. However, a really efficient way of approving the minutes, which is just as valid as what you just did, is that the minutes are distributed in advance of the meeting. The chair says, okay, everybody got the minutes. Are there any corrections? Are there any corrections? If there are none, then hope that there are no corrections, then the minutes are approved. If there are corrections, and the chair notes that and says, okay. The correction is noted, the minutes, the corrected minutes of our last meeting are approved. There are no objections to the minutes, only corrections, okay? When I left the meeting. I'm not gonna go through this. This is fun stuff that you can quiz yourself with. Call me and I'll give you the answers, okay? Fun, fun, fun. But Robert's Rules, I know, ethics, Robert's Rules, oh my God, you guys are champs.
I have one pressing question.
Oh, fine, please.
At every single meeting that I have been at for the last ten years, there has been a question relating to, so our minutes, I mean, our agenda's organized so that at the end of the, the end of the agenda, we have several points for the board to speak after the second publicly heard. The first is general comments and questions from the board related to school district. Like, oh, I went to the minor league softball game, it was great, whatever. Then there's new business. Then there's old business. Please help us to understand the difference between new and old business.
Okay, sure. New business is something that the board hasn't taken up already, right? That's what new business is. You haven't discussed it, it's brand spanking new. And I real, let's just say, I would really like for us to start working on a policy that's a little tighter with food allergies, right? And I'll bring that up under new business, right? It's not something you've done before. However, I will use my very good manners, and I will let the superintendent and the board president know that I intend to bring that up, just so that you're prepared for it. And if you have a policy committee, it's also nice to have a policy chair, all right? So you can have a more productive discussion. So you're not hitting people with something cold. You have the right to hit them with something cold, but it's not a good option, right? Old business is something that's been brought up before, right? Something that you haven't finished your work on, something that you're working towards. So after really, that nutrition policy thing that I mentioned, once I mention a new business, really, it kind of moves into old business and all of that. Does that help?
It does. We rewrote our bylaws to accommodate these three pieces. And I'm wondering if it would just be easier to take them away again? And I mean, I don't know, is there, what do other boards do?
Are you talking about the board comment part?
Yes.
That's really interesting. Not all boards have that. And every board can make its own decision on whether that's necessary or not. Do you want my opinion?
I do.
Okay. My opinion is, I don't think it's necessary. I think it probably extends your meeting. I think it's something that could be brought up under new business if it's a concern. Or if it's just something that you want to mention. Like, I was at, you know, the Great Musical, and it was wonderful. That's a great place for a new business. But I think that if you have that carved out in your agenda for board members to comment, think that puts some pressure on board members to actually say certain things. I'll give you an example. I was in a district right before Martin Luther King Day that had a section on their agenda to act. First board member comments, and I don't remember what they said, something very nice, right? One of them. But they were the only commissioner that didn't mention Martin Luther King. Every other commissioner went on about, well, the great man Martin Luther King, blah, 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 blah. And I'm like, oh, these minutes are gonna look horrible. Felt very, and I just don't think that there was a reason, you know, to do that. I really, you know.
So it's more typical just to have a new and old business section at the bottom?
Every board makes a decision for itself, but I will tell you, most of them don't have that, but some do. And it's perfectly legitimate if that's what you want. But it can be a minefield, really. And just, you know, already, your public comment, you give everybody five minutes. So, you know, you have robust meetings now, I'm sure. And the other thing, why I don't necessarily think that that's a productive addition to agendas, is that board members get to participate in the discussion on agenda items, which is very important, and no one else gets to do that. And the discussion is limited to the business at hand, which is very important. And if you have new business that you want to take up, or old business that you want to revisit, or say, where are we going on this? Like, I haven't seen any. You have the opportunity to do that. And it's in an orderly place. And everyone knows what to expect. So, you know, I love.
Food for thought, thank you. Thank you.
I, 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 but I'm sorry to give my opinion, but thanks for.
We very much respect you.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, so let's talk about something else.
Yes.
Strategic planning, because I had the opportunity to facilitate your strategic plan. And Superintendent Dr. Spreer, would you like to tell us about your experience with the strategic plan when we first did it?
Yes, so we're near four of our strategic plan. We actually, because COVID pushed it out an additional year. But about four years ago, the process was, I thought, done very well. Basically, where the process worked is that we started the first meeting. I provided a state of the district through an update to all the members who were in the audience. We had approximately fifty members at our meetings. And we had three meetings. The first one, like I said, I provided the state of the district. From that point, all of the members were divided into groups. And they were given kind of talking points or topics to discuss in those groups. They were brought back to the group as a whole and then reported out on what the discussions included, some of the main points that were brought up in those meetings. And Kathy did, I thought, did a great job of collating all that, putting it all together at each meeting. So each meeting, there was a different topic. And at the end of the process, she provided us with a document that included our goals for the district, that we then created an action plan for those goals.
Yeah, it was beautiful. I mean, what happens when the small groups do their work, right? And report out to the larger group? You start seeing these themes emerge, right? It starts from the very first meeting. And from those themes, and, and so it happened, right? We were able to discern, okay, this is, these are our goal areas. This is where our stakeholders want our resources to go, right? Because there's so many resources in the organization, right? And this is a roadmap that your stakeholders, you know, anyone's invited, right? And you did a great job, you know, promulgating those, you know, the advertisements for those meetings, so we had a very healthy turnout. And those conversations in the small groups were among different stakeholders, members of different stakeholder groups. Like, a parent was sitting with, you know, administrator was sitting with law enforcement. It was really very valuable for everybody there to hear other points of view and come to consensus around these goal areas. And once that document's in place, your work is, you know, unassailable because you listened to your stakeholders. They told you what you need to do for them. And you're right, tactical stuff, the action plan, that's, again, that's our educational lead. Does that, right? But laypeople contribute to the process in a very robust and meaningful way. And it's efficient, too. It's three meetings. They're ninety minutes each. Maybe they go a little bit over, but I mean, you know, we get a nice document out of that that the board formally approves and uses it to set all your district goals for the likes of the campaign. And when they're written flexibly enough, as I believe Hawthorne's was, and you get hit with a pandemic, and you have to put things on hold, you can still go back to that strategic plan. And the values that are outlined in there are also continuously tied to all of these places. So, yeah, and I must say, you did a phenomenal job on that state of the district presentation. And I know that years later, because when the superintendent say, what do I do with state of the district? I say, oh, we'll pick this one from Hawthorne. So you had a lot of imitators out of the way. But, you know, Hawthorne's process was extremely quality. It was great. It was great. I loved it. Matt loved it. We had a good time. We did, and it was very productive. So.
We are interested in renewing the plan. You know, I will, I will compliment the community we live in, and they trust the decisions that we make. And they, you don't overly attend meetings. And so we sit here lonely most of our meetings. And while I find that to be a tremendous compliment to the work that we do, I, I value their input. And I think that any way we can firmly get their input is, is something we should look into. And I know how heavily attended this was last time we did it. And it was right before we went out for referendum. And I think that's why we had their support, because they knew we were listening to them. And I would love to go back out, especially as you mentioned, post-pandemic. I hope we're post-pandemic. And see what the new thoughts are now. So we're really looking to you, and I know Mistress Spreer, but I think has some ideas too as far as timeline goes, you know, whatever you're suggesting, and then.
Yeah, I mean, we can do this according to the board's needs. Personally, I like doing it in the fall, you know, when there's a lot of energy. And I'm pretty sure that that's how we started ours, right? We did once a month, which still works really well. You can even do it a little bit more rapidly, depending on what's, you know, on your plate. And just kind of build that momentum. And, and it's just nice because people really understand what they're doing. And they can contribute. It's, strategic plan sounds very corporate, but it isn't. The veracity of it's important. People respond to that. And you refine it all into actionable items for the board.
Kathy, let me ask you a question about it. Because I agree, I think it was a great process, and I look forward to kind of renewing that plan. So my only question is, how does the old plan, or does it not get incorporated into the new process? Is there any discussion of the old plan in the process as you move forward? Or is it just you start over and start from?
No, that's a great question. And I would recommend that as we get this process off the ground, as part of your renewed state of the district, you address the strategic plan. And what you were able to accomplish, and what, you know, given the resources and the conditions on the ground, may not have very much changed. And that could be built into your ongoing strategic plan, or your stakeholders may say, well, you know, that's okay.
There's other priorities, or we think, right? They may say, there's other things that we think are more important right now. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I mean, I will say that we facilitated this for a fee. You know, this wonderful training you got here is part of your dues. You get what you pay for, right? But it's very, it's just like four thousand bucks.
Yeah.
It was, and, and, I mean, we got that tenfold one. What is the next step to formalize this, to secure like a date? Would it just be, do we reach out to somebody on your end?
You reach out to me. The board would pass a resolution, that's what they want to do. And then we'll, we'll set up dates. And, you know, happily, my fall is looking pretty good. So, but, but I will also say that other, that I've had this conversation with other boards, and they'll be, you know, looking for fall dates. So, you know, there may be a little bit of, you know, dancing around trying to get, we want to avoid, you know, high-profile district events and things like that. We don't want any conflict. So, you know, it's kind of hard to say until we like actually delve into your district calendars, like what the right dates would be. But we can do this.
I have a board member question from home. Dr. Morell would like to know if you are aware of districts gathering student input for strategic planning.
Absolutely. Well, students are, in fact, there were students who participated.
Okay.
I remember that distinctly. Yeah, and it does work, especially in a gated process. So thanks for the question.
When we did this last time, it was open to anyone who wanted to participate. Parents, community members, students, anyone who was interested in participating was welcome. You know, I obviously encourage the administrators to be part of the process. Teachers as well, somebody else I met, they were invited as well. Everybody, anyone who's interested in participating as well.
Yeah, and it works, and they come out. It's good.
You're right, and, and as I said, we are so appreciative that they support and trust the decisions that we make, but, you know, if this is a way to get them out and get them involved and acting and communicating with us, it's well worth it.
It's the best way. It really is, and a lot of boards, um, are in your situation where they say, well, we want to do what our community, but how do we know? Because they don't come to our meetings, and, you know, they don't attack us in the supermarket or anything like that, and that's a good, those are good things.
Right.
But there's still like something going at you, like, I'd like to know more.
Right, we'd like to know what the greater plot is.
And that's the way to do it. And I will tell you, you know, we just, uh, completed the process in Manchester pretty locally, and it worked beautifully. We had, uh, some pretty robust student participation there. It was good.
Okay.
Very, very rewarding, and we've got a, a great document. Um, and I believe they're going to use theirs for five or so, and that seems to be the trend. I think a lot of districts maybe worked from the pandemic, like, ooh, I was just getting started, and something happened. Um, but, you know, a five-year plan is, is perfectly useful. Most of these that I facilitate are three or five.
Okay. So, you know. So the next step is to pass the resolution and then to formally go get.
Well, to talk to the board, make sure that that's what you guys want, and then, yeah, pass the resolution, and we'll get going with the stuff. And thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Kathy and Trish, I thank you so much for joining us this evening. I mean, it literally, we have this on the books for four months. The day I became president, I reached up to Kathy and said, I need to book you, you, you know, you need to come. Um, you know, we teachers, we, our professional development is huge, so our board development is a big deal to me, and I very much value that you two came out here tonight.
Oh, thank you.
And you're welcome back anytime, and I look forward to this, because I know we'll get to see you on a regular basis.
Oh, I do, too. I do, and very, very participatory, too. So, thanks for the opportunity, and I look forward to seeing you all again. It's a good time.
Thank you so much for the PowerPoint, and any other information you'd like to get to me or Mr. Spreito, we'll disseminate to the board members.
I will. I will send an ethics packet, and I'll send copies of these presentations and my contact info and Patty's contact info, and we'll walk and run.
Thank you so much. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Drive home safely.
Take care.
Angela, your perfect, perfect timing for your, yay, for your student council report whenever you're ready.
I do it.
Good evening, everyone. To celebrate Read Across America, student council members visited Jefferson School on March 25th to read books and make buddy bracelets for the Bear Hall of Charm. The kids and student council members had so much fun. This week, the student council is hosting a spirit week. Yesterday was pajama Monday, Tuesday was surf, today was surf and surf Tuesday, tomorrow's Anything But a Backpack Day, and Thursday's Decade Day. Check out the HHS fairs and stuff for more details on the themes. Keep up with the Class of 22's post-graduation plans on the Bear Decisions Insta. Congrats to all of our seniors that have made their post-high school decisions so far. Come out to watch 14 teams compete in the pool ball tournament tomorrow night at 6:30 PM. Only HHS students, their families, and HHS staff members are able to attend. Do not miss out on the fun. There'll be a DJ and food. As a part of the broadcasting tube class, my fellow classmates and I had the opportunity to visit all three elementary schools to interview some of the fifth graders about the Treps program, where they learn about entrepreneurship and how to plan and make their own business. Last night, the fifth graders came together to sell all of their products at Treps night. It was a great event for the fifth graders. On March 18th, HHS's Italian club hosted Carnival. Students enjoyed baked goods, cannolis, Italian ice, waffles, and more. Students were also able to play FIFA against each other. It was a fun day for everyone. March 31st was our World Language Honor Society induction, where students received their honors scores and the new members were inducted. Thank you to Mrs. Pizarro for coordinating the night's program. We're so glad to have honored our deserving students of the Italian and Spanish classes for the first time in person in two years. Congratulations. April 7th was our National Honor Society induction, where our current members were honored and our new members were inducted. Thanks to our NHS advisor, Mr. McMahon, for coordinating a great night to honor our students on their high achievements. Congratulations. Spring sports have started, and all of our teams have opened up their season with a win. Softball opened up their season, well, whatever, just 3-1, but now we're 4-1 with our win against Garfield today, 9-6, and also an 8-6 comeback win against Union City, a 16-3 win against West New York Memorial, and a 7-3 win against Sodai. Softball's now playing their home games at the newly redone Bray Abbeals. Baseball opened up their season 2-1 with a 7-4 win against Lakeland and a 4-2 win against Sodai. Boys lacrosse opened their season at home with a 16-3 win against Passaicum. They're now 2-1 and look to be playing strong against some tough teams coming up. Golf won their first match against Manchester last week. Both the girls and boys outdoor track teams opened up their seasons 2-0. The girls beat Eastern Christian 74-55 and Lodi 86-29, and the boys defeated Lodi by a score of 97-43 and Eastern Christian 95-45. It was a great team effort with many personal records set. Over the weekend, both teams competed at the Passaic County Relays. The girls entered seven varsity events and won five of them. The boys came in fourth overall as a team, and the Bears brought home many medals and broke a school record in the process. Our newest sports addition to HHS, Girls Live Football, won their first game against Harrison 14-0. Great job to all the girls for putting in the work for the past month, and to many of the girls that are also playing another spring sport. Good luck to all of our spring sports on the rest of their seasons. The high school library media center will highlight three important national events this month: Arab American Heritage Month, National Poetry Month, and National Deaf History Month. For each theme, the library offers faculty instructional materials and resources, and engages students with library book displays and bulletin boards, informational materials, daily morning announcements, quotes and flyers, social media postings, and relevant books on our pop-up library that moves around the school. Each week, the library features one special book. This week, this week focuses on the book written by junior student Paul Duer, 1864. This is Paul's fourth historical fiction novella. Through the remaining weeks of April, the library will highlight books that feature authors and or characters from Arab countries as we celebrate Arab American Heritage Month. As all seniors begin their fourth marking period TED Talk Legacy Project, they begin with a lesson in the library on research skills, finding credible sources using Google Advanced Features and our public library databases. Those all have to report for you home.
Thank you so much, Angela. Mr. Spreito, your superintendent's report.
Very much. Uh, so I just want to start by just saying it's so nice that we're able to have our students visiting our elementary, our high school students visiting our elementary students, um, you know, as well as having some of the events that we had prior to COVID, such as Convalley, which I know is a, is a fan favorite over at the high school, but it's just nice to be able to do those things again, and I feel like we're getting back to a lot of that, which is, which is great for all of our, all of our kids, because not only do our elementary students benefit from the high school, students go down, and I know they enjoy doing it as well, so everyone wins when we're able to do those things. Um, with that being said, uh, the Wax Museum, for one more year, uh, they decided to do that virtually, so although it hasn't been released yet, it is just about to be unveiled, uh, so Washington School, uh, they're in the process of recording all the presentations. There's a few additional students that have to, uh, complete that. Once they are done, uh, we will be sharing that video, uh, not only within our district, but outside of our district. Uh, so as you know, for those who have attended the Wax Museum, it's a great event by Washington School, uh, for our fifth graders, and I want to thank, uh, Mrs. Timpreno Rossi and Mrs. Pearl, uh, again, for organizing it and, and, you know, coordinating everything with the recording. So as soon as that is ready to release, we will be sure to share it. I look forward to seeing myself, I haven't seen it, so I'm excited to see it. Um, I do want to piggyback on something that Angela mentioned in regard to our high school students who are inducted into the National Honor Society, Spanish and Italian Honor Societies, uh, over the past month. Uh, again, I think our advisors did a great job. Mr. McMahon, who runs our National Honor Society event, uh, that was the most recent induction that took place, uh, at the high school, and, uh, we congratulated all those students who were inducted into the National Honor Society. Uh, the Gold Tassel Dinner for our senior NHS members will take place, I believe it's on May 17th. Uh, that's actually not at the school, that's at an outside venue at the Tides. So I look forward to the Gold Tassel Dinner honoring our seniors. Uh, but I do want to commend, uh, Mrs. Pizarro, Mr. Duran. This year, for the first time, we had a combined world language induction ceremony, which I thought went very, very well. Uh, and it was the first time, so again, I think they did a great job of coordinating that event. Uh, and again, congratulations to all those students who were inducted into the Italian and Spanish Honor Societies. Also want to, uh, commend all of our spring sports teams. It's always nice in the spring when we see all the students out in the field, uh, athletic fields, you know, whether it be baseball, softball, lacrosse, track, uh, and as Angela mentioned, our flag football team, golf as well, uh, but our new flag football team. So, uh, it's exciting to see all the kids out there, a lot of activity on our fields again. Again, it's wonderful to see. I look forward to the rest of the spring season. Weather's finally warming up a little bit, so, uh, really look forward to being out there in nice warm weather. Um, I also want to mention, Angela mentioned, the, the Treps event. So that is an annual event that we run at Wash, uh, excuse me, at Roosevelt Elementary School, uh, but it's all three of our elementary schools, all of our fifth graders participate. That's coordinated by our, our research and exploration teachers, Mrs. Del Sandro at Roosevelt, Miss Bressler at Jefferson in Washington. Um, it's always a fun event. Uh, unfortunately, I had a conflict, I wasn't able to attend myself, but I know the kids really enjoy it, and, uh, I heard it was a great, great turnout, a lot of parents attended, so I just want to thank everyone for, everyone who coordinated that. Um, some other important dates, just some upcoming dates that I want to mention. Uh, our annual budget hearing is on Tuesday, uh, April 26th, and this, uh, board meeting room right here. Uh, on May 10th, we look forward to honoring and recognizing our teachers and educational support professionals of the year, uh, so we look forward to that at our May 10th board meeting. Also, uh, at the end of this month, we have our high school spring, uh, high school, uh, spring production. That, uh, begins on Thursday, April 28th, and runs through Sunday, May 1st. There, there's one, uh, performance on Thursday and Friday, two on Saturday, and one on Sunday, so please come out and support all of our high school students who participate in the high school spring production. And the LMS drama production, the Lincoln Middle School production is on Friday, May 3rd, Lincoln Middle School. Uh, and finally, uh, you know, just stay tuned to the calendar, a lot of events coming up in the month of May, all of our spring concerts. Uh, we backed this year in person, so I look forward to attending those, uh, but I would just encourage everyone to stay tuned to, uh, the district website, as well as those weekly announcements that come home, which go through all the dates for those events. Um, the last thing I do want to mention is a great new opportunity. Uh, this was actually shared, uh, through our weekly report at the high school, but I want, I want to just highlight it, because I think it's important. Uh, we have, uh, Mrs. Graziano, our science and math supervisor, has been working really hard to develop a partnership with Passaic County Community College. And through her efforts, uh, there's a unique opportunity that's arisen as part of this new partnership, and I'm just going to read exactly how it, how this works. So based on this new community college opportunity, uh, through, there's a grant through Passaic County Community College, uh, and the PCCC STEM Grant, students will be able to enroll for full college credit at Hawthorne High School. Uh, unlike many current dual enrollment credits, which we do offer at the high school as well, um, these credits are completely free of cost, as opposed to our dual enrollment, which there is a slight cost to. Uh, these college credits, uh, these community college credits of B or above are fully transferable uh, to any four-year college in New Jersey. And as mentioned, because they're part of a grant, they're going to permit up to 24 students in a college math 108, a college math 109, right at Hawthorne High School. Um, and again, they can attend free of cost as part of this agreement. Uh, we're very pleased to be able to, uh, make this offer to our students. The classes will be scheduled for approximately, from approximately 3:00 PM to 4:15 PM, two days a week, for 15 weeks. Um, interested students should contact the high school, specifically Mrs. Graziano, but you can contact Hawthorne High School by April 30th, and she'll be able to give you more of the details. Uh, but it's a great opportunity, and it's just the first step of this new partnership with Passaic County Community College. I look forward to talking more about some of the offerings that will be available through this partnership with Passaic County Community College, so.
Thank you, Mr. Spreito, very exciting stuff. Um, just for general public knowledge, the musical for the high school is High School Musical.
Yes.
The musical, which is very popular amongst the children these days, and the musical for LMS is Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, or Lily, Lily Won't Find the Chocolate Factory.
In school.
Lily Won't Find the Chocolate Factory. So anybody interested in those two things, they should go, it'd be great production. Mr. Raisher, curriculum and instruction?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the committee on curriculum instruction recommends following resolutions. CI 1 on page 3, CI 3 through CI 11 on page 4. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Raisher, seconded by Mr. Palouse. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Palouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisher?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes. Personnel, Ms. Erin Trout is not here. Um, Mr. Spreito, should I do an announcement, or should we? Okay. Um, the following resolutions are pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. P 1 through P 13 on page 5, and P 14 through P 18, oh, I'm sorry, P 14 through P 19 on page 6. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shortway. Roll call, please.
Mr. Palouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisher?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes. Mr. Plaveho is also not in attendance.
Mr. Palouse, would you please move?
Yes, sure. Pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, committee on finance and administration recommends the following resolution on page 7. F 1 through A 8, over to page 8, A 9 through A 11. On behalf of the committee, I so move. Motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Palouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisher?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes. Claims, I had the honor of doing it this month in Mr. Pizarro's absence. Um, in accordance with NJAC 6A 23-2:11 DC 3 NC 4, it is recommended the bill be approved for the month of April 22, April of 2022. Um, on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion.
Seconded by Mr. Shortway. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Palouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisher?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes. Mr. Carr, buildings and grounds.
Thank you, Madam President. Pursuant to the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, the committee on buildings and grounds recommends the following resolutions. BG 1 on page 8, BG 2 through BG 6 on page 9. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Palouse. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Raisher?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Palus?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes. Policy. Mr. Shortway, would you feel comfortable?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay.
Pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Committee on Policy recommends the following resolutions: PO-1 to BO-2 on page 9.
You could just say continue on page 10.
P-N-R?
You could just say continue on page 10. I think that's PO-2.
Yeah, it's all part of it. PO-2, continue on page 10.
On behalf of the committee, I so move.
On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Palus. Any discussion?
Just if I could comment just quickly on this, just on PO-2, I just want to let you know. So we conducted, or we had Strauss Sessmeyer, our policy consultant, do an audit of our policy manual, which is hundreds of policies. And I will tell you that we had a very good result from that audit. I was very pleased with it. But these, some of these, as you see, the abolishment of the following policies and rights, you can see there's a very small list. But so some of these, just so you know, not all of them were just simply abolished. Some of them were either absorbed in other policies. Some were eliminated because they just weren't necessary anymore. But many of them, like attendance, for example, we do have an attendance policy. This particular one was just absorbed in another policy. So again, this was based on, the reason we did this was based on that policy audit. And this was the recommendation of Strauss Sessmeyer, our policy consultant, to abolish these policies that are listed here. Because we may have other ones that address these areas, or they weren't even, all right? So just so you know that, that was where that came from.
Thank you, Mr. Sprejo. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Palus?
Yes.
Mr. Raisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes. Committee and liaison reports. Mr. Carr, Buildings and Grounds and Legislative.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Buildings and Grounds met last week. We discussed a number of topics. The window installation at Roosevelt School and Jefferson Schools are now completed. Shade installation is also completed at all schools. The brick repointing is completed at Washington School. April 14th, there'll be equipment drop off at Jefferson School. This equipment is for the refinishing of the gym floor. As per our contractor, it should be ready for use when students return to school on April 25th. And the playgrounds were inspected by the state on April 5th. And we are currently awaiting on the state report to see if there are any issues that need to be addressed. That concludes my report on that. Legislatively, the Senate approved the following education-related measures, which now hit the Assembly for further consideration. The EdTPA elimination bill, S-896, prohibits the State Board of Education from requiring the completion of a Commissioner of Education -approved performance-based assessment, such as the EdTPA, as a requirement for teacher certification. We remove this requirement from both the attainment of a certificate of eligibility with advanced standing or certificate of eligibility. Teaching candidates would still have to complete a performance-based assessment approved by an educator preparation program. Preapprenticeship program, Bill S-525, enhances and expands the state's current initiatives under the Youth Transitions to Work Partnership Act to establish preapprenticeship programs to assist young people in entering apprenticeship programs with links to post-secondary education credentials. Remembering 9/11, Bill S-713 requires school districts to include information on events from September 11th through 2001 as part of New Jersey student learning standards and social studies. The bill also requires public schools to annually organize a commemorative event that will enhance students' awareness of the events of that law. Military Impact Aid, S-1929, provides a supplemental appropriation for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $1.5 million to provide aid to certain military-impacted districts. This amount is added to the appropriation for stabilization aid in the Department of Education. This supplemental appropriation will ensure that the Rockaway Township and 10 full school districts, both of which have not yet received military impact aid in fiscal year 2022, are allocated military impact aid in the amounts of $776,000 and $752,000 respectively. In the Assembly voting session, the General Assembly approved the following bills, each of which must pass the Senate before calling it to the Governor. Field testing graduation exit exam, Bill A-3196, requires the State Board of Education in coordination with the Commissioner of Education to administer a New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment as a field test for 11th grade students expected to graduate 2023. However, the NJGPA will not be used as a prerequisite for graduation for students currently in their junior year. In addition, these students would not have to pass a substitute competency test, such as the ACT or the SAT, or demonstrate proficiency through techniques and instruments other than a standardized test to graduate. The bill also requires the State Board of Education and the Commissioner of Education to use the results of the test to assist in the development of state assessments for future graduating classes. Nothing in the bill would be construed to alter or amend local graduation requirements adopted by the Board of Education. COVID assistance reporting, A-2067, requires NJDOE to annually report to the Governor and Legislature the amount of federal aid related to COVID relief it receives and distributes to districts as well as the expenses for which grant funds were used by these districts. Additionally, the NJDOE could submit a final report regarding the expenditure of federal grant funds received to address the impact of COVID-19 on public education. No later than six months following, the complete exhaustion of funds are received by the school districts. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Clavijo is not present. Mr. Palus, do you have any information? Finance and administration did not meet this month.
No, there's no report. We didn't have a committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Additionally, council liaison position will be taken over by Mr. Sotaro upon his return. So next month, that will be his name appearing on this list. Ms. Erin Trout is not present. Prefer, can you see SBA? I will just go over a few NJSBA highlights. NJSBA's second annual spring symposium agenda is now live. The actual spring symposium is taking place on April 26th and April 27th. Registration information is available in our little digest. Should you want that, I can certainly forward it to you. There was an interesting town that conducted some special elections. I just wanted to note that our neighbor, Midland Park, did go out on March 8th in an attempt to have people support what looks like a turf field project, and it was not passed. I thought was very interesting. Additionally, there has been introduction of Chapter 408, which would allow the temporary hiring of retired teachers should there be a proof of critical need. So that's something that we can look for on the horizon. And additionally, I think I have one last thing. NJSBA is, the search is underway for their executive director. There is a committee. They're looking for input. You can, there's a bunch of information here if anybody would like to contribute to that search in any way. That is all I have for NJSBA. Dr. Morel is not here for policy. We did not meet this month. The Policy Committee did not meet this month as well. Mr. Palus, HEPAC and CPAC.
I have just a few things on HEP and CPAC. HEP is planning two fundraisers. One is going to be April 30th, which is coming up pretty soon. Pictures in Gull Brook Park. We encourage everybody to get out there and have a picture table with your families. And you can get more information on the HEP Facebook page. And they're also planning a second event, which is the Board and Brush and Ramsey. It's going to be at the Board and Brush and Ramsey. That's going to be on May 13th. Both fundraisers, again, you can find more information on the HEP Facebook page, and you can go onto the HEP website. You can also go onto the Hawthorne District website and click on Community. Then you will find a link to the HEP site there in case you don't know where to go. But again, there's two good events, and one is coming up, hopefully we get a nice sunny day on April 30th in the park for your family portraits. And moving over to CPAC, there's a few events coming up, and they all seem to be similar, focused around who will care for my loved one once I am gone. Again, this is, you can find the information on their Facebook, Hawthorne NJ CPAC on Facebook. April 21st, Ark of New Jersey is going to be hosting the event on April 27th. It seems to be a similar campfire chat, which is going to be a webinar, Understanding Able Accounts, Special Needs Trust, and Guardianship. And then I think it's going to be a repeat on NJ Regional Family Support Planning Council will be hosting it on April 30th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And again, that is going to be who will care for my loved one once I am gone. So those are three similar and very important events for you to hopefully attend. And then last but not least, also on their Facebook page, they mentioned an informative article debunking the myths regarding inclusion in the classroom. There's a lot of benefits, so please take some time to read that article. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palus. Mr. Raisher, curriculum instruction?
Thank you, Madam President. We had three items that we discussed in the CNI meeting. The first one was curricular updates and revisions. It's important to note that now these revisions happen year-round. In the past, we had just been doing them in the summer, and now because we're doing them year-round, it's a little bit more proactive into waiting until the summer. K-5 Social Studies resource update. We are going to be updating the curriculum, the textbooks. We're a little bit outdated, so now we're going to go to an online platform called Inquiry Journey. It's just a roadmap that helps us create the curriculum. We still create the curriculum ourselves, but there are online resources that are updated that we can use. And we also discussed in the meeting, the piece and guide now will be month-to-month, a full month of social studies, then a full month of science that will facilitate the learning. K-5 Science resource update. We're looking at something called Mystery Science, an online series, again, to help us create a curriculum map. K-5 Standards-Based Rating Proposal. We're in the process of meeting to get the discussion going. The goal would be for the 2023-2024 school year for standard-based report cards. There's a lot of PD that goes on with teachers and then with the students and also community to understand exactly what a standard-based report card is, that you might not be getting a specific grade. You might get all the standards, different numbers for them, to understand exactly what that means. So that's starting to be discussed, but won't happen for a little while. And then finally, K-12 Health and PE update. We're looking at a program called The Great Body Shop. It also comes with an online parent portal, and that's for K-5. The second thing talked about was a Senior Experienced Internship Program through BCSS. Mr. Domeno found this program where BCCS finds the internship for our students. The internships will have all different options, a full day, half day, different types of programs. I asked a question in the meeting. It's through Bergen County Special Services, but yes, it will be in State County too. And also, they'll monitor the students throughout the process. So if they are struggling in school while they're doing their internship, they might not be able to do the internship fully, make sure they stay on track in school. And then the final, third point, Summer Program Updates, College Bootcamp for Rising Seniors. This is a great program for any Rising Senior, two to three days, prepare for SATs, college essays, and the messages were sent out over social media to get the word out. And it's completely free. So to take SAT prep courses for language arts and math are pretty expensive. This is a free program in the summer for two to three days to do it right here in Hawthorne. Then the final note is there's going to be a 6th through 12th grade credit recovery. It will be means-based. It will also be in the summer, and it's also completely free. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Raisher. Publicly heard, at this time, members of the public may ask any questions or make comments on educational issues or school matters. Seeing as we have no one approached the podium, I'll move on to general comments and questions from the board related to the school districts. I'll start down by you, Mr. Carr.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I had the opportunity to attend Treps at Roosevelt School. And I tell you what, what an excellent way to promote entrepreneurship. And I got to tell you, we have appointed a group of salesmen and women based upon the amount of money I spent.
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you.
So on behalf of the three schools that participated, that was an awesome job. I greatly enjoyed that. That's all.
Mr. Shortway?
Roll call.
Mr. Raisher?
Now that I know exactly what all these things are, I'm going to save mine for old business.
Okay.
But I have something.
For this one meeting, we'll be able to keep it straight.
I asked, now she answered that question once.
Thank you, Mr. Raisher. Mr. Palus, anything? Don't feel like you have to.
No, I don't have to. I did not comment on Bruce's CNI report that you said. I have a quick question.
Sure.
Which could be a little old business since we just blow it up.
Just go ahead.
But you mentioned the Rising Seniors program. Do you have dates on that? I'm sorry if you mentioned. For the college boot camp? Yeah. I think it's August 3rd and 4th.
August 3rd and 4th.
3rd and 4th. Okay, thank you. You have to register. I could send you a flyer. They're trying to gauge interest right now, so I'll send you a flyer. There's a link. You have to click on it. Just they're trying to get an idea of how many kids are interested. But I think it's a great opportunity.
New business. We'll start with you, Mr. Palus.
No new business, Debbie.
Mr. Raisher?
I'm layable.
Okay.
No, no.
Nothing new.
I'm sorry, just about the calendar. I forgot to mention this before. So tonight, we approved, just so everyone's clear on the process, how this works, we approved the revision to the district calendar. You'll be happy about that. So basically, the way this works every year is that we build in four inclusive other days to be used throughout the year. As you know, this year, we used one on the first day of school for Hurricane Ida. And we only use one other throughout the numerous ice and snow storms. So that means we have two days remaining. In our agreement with our teachers association, we basically return those days, you know, at some point during the end of the year. So typically, the way we do it, we give one back around Memorial Day. And because we have a second one this year, and we've done this in the past, is we will close schools on Election Day to avoid having students and staff in the schools while people are voting in the schools as well. So those are the two days we're going to be giving back, Tuesday, May 31st and Tuesday, June 7th. So I posted, I'll be posting the calendar on the district website, the revised calendar. I'll also share it out with our staff and everyone after tonight. If we approve it tonight. But that's the process, just so you know. That's how those days are determined, and that's why we're going to file the calendar.
Can we ask that the staff get that out in their Sunday calls?
Yeah, we'll get the principals out of there. They'll show you something else.
Thank you, Mr. Sprejo. I also have something, and pardon me if this was mentioned. It very well may have. It's been a long night. Did you guys talk about the first girls' flag football game?
She.
Did she? 27? I just want to infer.
Oh, the first home game. Sorry, we didn't talk about that.
I hurried, and then I kind of.
Thursday, it grows. The flag football, they're playing Thursday.
April 27?
Thursday. Well, no, this Thursday, they're playing at Pop-Tac.
And then the 27th.
And then they're home on the 27th.
So everyone's encouraged to come out and support them. Obviously, all of our sports teams were encouraged to support, but this is a very unique opportunity that seems to be really taking off, and it's a great thing. So their first home game is the 27th. Old business. Mr. Carr?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Shortway?
No.
I know you have something, Mr. Raisher.
I have right now. Old business. No, it's actually a couple things Mr. Sprejo mentioned of the National Honor Society, the Italian and Spanish Honor Society. It was awesome to be there in person. And think back to a year before, we're like watching on our TV at home on Zoom, which was wonderful. The kids, you saw them for a couple seconds. But it was so much nicer to be there, you know, in person as things get back to normal. Just to encourage people, like that dual enrollment with the credits, I mean, I know this from one of my donors, hopefully both, like you can use those credits in college, and they usually do get accepted. So they could save you a lot of money in college if you take these courses. And especially that these are free. I know some of the other dual enrollments, there is a minimal fee, and it's a bit of a chance. Like you don't know if the college is going to accept those credits or not. But especially if it's free, I would encourage anybody to do that, save a little money down the line. And then one other note that I had is one of the bills that you discussed about 9/11, this happens in my school, and it's interesting. There's no kids who were alive during 9/11 who are in school. So like, I'm excited that they actually came up with that bill because you would have to be 21, you know, to be still in school to be alive when it happened. So I know when we have it in our school, the kids do realize what it is, but it really is more something that happened in history than something that most of us have looked through. So I'm glad that they did that to recognize it. It's working last time. That's it for old business.
Thank you, Mr. Raisher. Mr. Palus?
No old business. Thank you.
And I have no old business. So seeing as we have no more businesses to discuss, there will be no private session this evening. So I will entertain a motion to go into private -- nope, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Carr, seconded by Mr. Palus. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Palus?
Yes.
Mr. Raisher?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes. Happy Easter to everyone who celebrates. Happy Passover to everyone who celebrates. I hope you all.